No. Trust me, you would have heard it if it was. I'll tell you later.
It was that much.
Need a little under wire.
Help seal everything up.
Oh, are you talking about one of the... Not the city break? Yeah, it wasn't that much. Wasn't much. I think it was gonna be a pasture. I mean, we did some of the work in the three of patch.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the September 3, 2019 Crest Hill City Council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If everyone would please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag. And I would ask that you please remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's with sadness that I ask for you to keep in your prayers Mr. Daniel Bandos, who passed away suddenly Sunday evening. Dan is the son of Lori Thrasher, who is one of our longtime employees in the clerk's office. He also worked several summers as part-time summer help for the city of Crest Hill. So I ask that you keep in your prayers his mother Lori, stepdad Kevin, sister Brittany, and grandpa and grandma Bandos. So in his honor, I would ask for a moment of silence in memory of Mr. Daniel Bandos. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Race Hallman.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke. John Verche.
Here.
Barbara Sclaire.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
Joe Kubal.
All right, I did receive messages from Alderman Dyke and Alderman Kubal. They will be unavailable for this evening's meeting, so they are excused. You have before you the minutes of the city council meeting that was held on August 19, 2019. Motion would be in order. We have motion by Alderman Colli-Pietro, seconded by Alderman Gazal, for the approval of the minutes held on August 19, 2019. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
You also have before you the minutes of the work session held on August 26, 2019. Motion would be in order. Motion by Alderman Sclaire, seconded by Alderman Colli-Pietro, for the minutes of the work session held on August 26, 2019. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we do have special, several special guests in the audience this evening. First is, we have Ms. Angelique Barthel in the audience, and she is representing the Variety of Illinois Children's Charities. She is here for a special community award to the Siegel family for their contributions to children with special needs. So I'd like to introduce Ms. Angelique Barthel. Angie.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And thank you to the council of Crest Hill for having us tonight. Variety the Children's Charity of Illinois is the Illinois chapter of an international organization that helps children with disabilities and their families pay for things that insurance doesn't. This runs the gamut from grants for adaptive bicycles and sports wheelchairs to fun things to do at our Variety at Play program. And that is why we're here tonight, to honor the Siegel family. For the last seven years, they have opened their farm gates to families of children with disabilities on four separate dates throughout the pumpkin festival, absolutely free of charge. So that's been a retail value of between $14.95 and $18.95 per person. And there's up to six free tickets, so that the entire immediate family can attend. The issue that we see a lot with Variety Children's families is that there just isn't a lot of disposable income. So not only is Siegel's family farm accessible, but they've also made it affordable as a day out for children to do something fun. And that's really the whole goal of our organization, is to level the playing field and bridge the gap between resources and these kids just having a regular childhood. So for that, we present our annual Heart of the Community Award to Katie and Paul Siegel.
Thank you. This is just, I mean, we've had a lot of special needs kids that come during Pumpkin Fest for our fall school tours. And we always see the smiling faces they come, that we have both from young up to adults that come out and enjoy the time, feeding the farm animals, getting to take a hayride, being able to enjoy things that normally they can't enjoy. And so we sat down and we talked together, and we said, well, why don't we do an appreciation weekend just like we do for our military and our first responders? So we started seven years ago doing our special needs weekends. And I didn't think it was going to be that much of a success, because from talking to other families, it's hard for them to get out of the house. It's a lot of work to get out of the house. But all the families that have come each year, it just keeps growing year after year. And they just enjoy it so much that, like, the smiles on their faces just melt your heart when they get to come out, because they can take a hayride, because we made them accessible, that a wheelchair can get up there. We let them be able to take a train ride on just on an actual track that normally they can't do, or take a grain train ride, or pet and feed the farm animals. So it's just stuff that they never thought they'd be able to do, because a lot of places they go to, it's way too crowded to be able to enjoy it, because they get overwhelmed. A lot of autistic kids have a lot of trouble with it. But we made it so that it will work for them. We'll have quiet areas for the kids to be able to enjoy while they're here at the farm, to be able to enjoy that day with the family. Because a lot of the times, the parents are crying because they're so appreciative of it, because their kids want to be able to do normal kid things, and so do the parents. But when they get to those things, they have to leave right away, because the kids have an episode. And then they don't want to be embarrassed, because they see their kids screaming and everybody staring at them. We don't want that to happen. That's why we have quiet zones for them to be able to enjoy. So for those that have never heard about our special needs weekend, we have a sign-up sheet. They can go onto our Facebook page or onto our website, mypumpkinfarm.com, and be able to sign up for admission up to six immediate family to come out and enjoy the day, both our first weekend and our last weekend, which opening weekend is September 28th and 29th. And then we'll be open daily from that until Halloween, from 10 till 6. Also, we will be having our military appreciation weekend as our thank you to our military families as well, where they get to come in for free, along with our first responders. Will also be our opening weekend as well. And then we also have a bunch of shows, too, that we'll be doing. We have a magician coming out. We have a dance party that we're going to be having as well, along with, we have one of our new attraction, which is Jax's Roller Bowler. It's going to be a very difficult attraction to be able to defeat. You take a ball and you try to get it up on the top without it rolling back at you. I haven't got it yet, my mom has. So that should be interesting, watching families be able to do. So the nice thing with our farm is that we make sure that there's enough to do for all families to enjoy, not just the toddlers or the kids. It's something the whole family can come, so teenagers can come and enjoy it. So a lot of times, once those teenagers get to 7th, 8th grade, they're like, no, Mom, I'm not going out with you, I'm too cool. There's nothing for me to do there. We made sure there's enough activities for the older crew to be able to do, so they can actually spend a whole day as a family and be able to eat, too. We have plenty of food to eat, along with those adults that want to have a nice adult beverage as well. Thank you to the city of Crest Hill. They're able to have a nice ice cold beer or wine while they're around, or even a Bloody Mary. So we hope to see everybody out come this fall. We open September 28 through Halloween. Thank you.
Thank you, and, you know, thank you especially for everything you do for the special needs, for the veterans. But just thank you for everything you do for all the families, all the young children that come to the farm. I know there's a lot of schoolchildren that come to the farm also for educational purposes. As families, it's nice to see a lot of the families there with the young children. You know, we've kind of lost touch of that in our society today. So, you know, you certainly have made Siegel's Cottonwood Farms Fall Fest a destination point for the city of Crest Hill. For that, we thank you very much. And we wish you a lot of success this year especially, and for the years to come. And thank you to Angelique also for notifying me and wanting to make the presentation here. That was very a nice gesture on your part. And so thank you, and I'll bless each one of you.
Thank you.
I'll open it up from city council, if they want to make any comments.
Well, thank you for all what you do. I appreciate it myself, and you might be blessed always.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, for what you do for all the years you've done, also. Very good job.
It's a very generous thing to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
And not just the groups that you've helped out more recently, but the groups that you've helped out for years. Thank you for that. And what's that newest ride, that attraction, who's that named after?
My son, Jackson.
Thank you for everything. But if you want to get together and get a picture of the three of you.
We talked about, you know, we've been working with special needs for a long time in our school tours. And I got to know Marco when he worked at UCP. They changed their name now. I used to be on the board there, I guess for 12 years. And that's how I first met Marco. So Marco knows firsthand that the kids and the adults in the center at UCP would come out. And as Katie said, to see the profound disabled kids that we serve at what used to be UCP, to see the smiles on their faces when they can get close to an animal, that it's just, it does melt your heart, because you can, I'm sure they look forward to it. And the adults the same way, because they just don't get a chance to do that very often. And to be in a safe environment, usually when they're there, we have them come when there's not very many other people around, so they have plenty of time and they don't, not getting pushed around and so forth. Although most of them are literally getting pushed around because they're in chairs. But I say, that's the first time I met Marco was when he worked there, when I was on the board. So, and I'd like to thank the gentlemen here tonight, along with all the veterans and those that are currently serving. We wouldn't have the freedoms that we have were remembered on 9/11, how quickly that freedom can be taken away if you let things get out of control. And so these gentlemen and all veterans are welcome to come to the farm with their families that first weekend, get in for free. So our little way of saying thank you to those guys. So I want to thank them personally tonight for their service, and all the guys and gals that aren't here tonight, that I'd like to thank them as well. So thank you for allowing us to come tonight.
Thanks, Paul. Angelique, anything else?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And also, we have two special veterans in our audience tonight. We have Dan Sizek and Ed Brookman here for a special presentation for the events committee.
Hi, guys.
Hey.
Hey, Tina.
Hi. And it seems like I just saw you. Well, I told Ed when he was in Newmark today that this is one of my top favorite nights of the year, because I just love when we're able to give back to the community, especially to these gentlemen and their wonderful organization, the disabled veterans in Crest Hill. So we are so happy to say that this year, the raffles, we raised $1,500 to give to them tonight. So we're really excited about that, and we have a check gentleman for you guys from the events committee for $1,500. So we're very happy.
No, I certainly want to thank the gentlemen for being out there all day and helping out with the picnic. Glad we're able to raise some money for a great cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate.
I'd like to present this plaque to the city and say, on behalf of disabled veterans, we appreciate it. And even though I wasn't able to be there, I had a death in the family and I was in Minnesota. But I will be there next year, I was there last year. And we certainly appreciate Crest Hill doing everything they've done for us. Thank you.
That's good.
Sure.
And Ed and Dan and all the veterans, thank you for everything you do, especially for the DAV and all your hard work and all the sacrifices that all you ladies and gentlemen made for the freedoms that we have today. So thank you.
Thank you for the plaque, but it's unnecessary. We appreciate you. You don't have to thank us. We want to thank you.
Okay, back to the agenda items. Our city administrator, Heather McGuire. Good evening, Heather.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have one agenda item before you this evening. That is a resolution authorizing the execution of a grant of permanent easement between the city of Crest Hill and the Arbor Glen Homeowners Association. As council may recall, on May 6, we passed an intergovernmental agreement with the Will County Forest Preserve to construct a sidewalk on the south side of Rockland Road from the Arbor Glen subdivision to the forest preserve walking paths. This agreement allows us to have the easement that would be located on the homeowners association property in order to construct that sidewalk. So I'd be seeking approval on that this evening.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Sclaire, for the execution of a grant of permanent easement to the city of Crest Hill and the Arbor Glen Homeowners Association. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number is 1054.
Thank you, that was the only item I had this evening, and we are hopeful that construction will begin very quickly on that. I know the forest preserve is anxious to get started, so hoping to wrap that up as soon as possible.
So as the resident.
Yes, absolutely. The annual, or I'm sorry, the informational report is on file. And for the public's information, we will be holding a work session on September 9. Current topics include a potential development in the Hobo Building, zoning at 1450 Theodore Street, Jasmine Creek Special Service Area, and the Memorial Garden concepts for the new city hall and police station. I'd be happy to answer any other questions this evening.
Any questions of city administrator? Thank you, Heather. Moving on, Public Works Department, our director of Public Works, Mr. Tom Negitz. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just one item on the agenda this evening, and that would be rejection of bids of the 2019-2020 PCC concrete repair program. As you may recall from the work session previously, the city received higher bids than anticipated and a lower bidder pool, or number of bidder pool than desired. So we seek your approval to reject those bids and put the program back out for bidding.
So move, just presented.
Second. We have motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Colli-Pietro for the rejection of bids for the 2019-2020 PCC concrete repair program. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's all we have this evening, mayor, thank you.
Any questions of Public Works?
I just want to thank Jeremy and Eric for coming out to fix that water main break.
Oh, and Brian, there's a lot of them out there. Oh, there's five of them out there.
When I walked by Jeremy and Eric, they were just like, oh.
Thank you.
For coming on Labor Day.
How appropriate.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Thank you, mayor.
Moving on, Community Development Department, our community development director, Scott McElroy. Good evening, Scott.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have no agenda items. Just a note that we are planning the winter event coming up in November, as crazy as that sounds, on an 80-degree day. Things are in the works and pretty much wrapped up. We are still looking for entertainment, and I will be taking suggestions if anybody's got any entertainment suggestions. So be happy to look into it.
I'll be happy to sing.
I'd be happy to have you up there. But other than that, that's all I got.
Okay, any questions of Community Development? Fuller's coming along quickly, so.
Yes, Fuller's is pretty close. I think they're just about done with the building and the vacuum stations. I think the biggest thing they have left is putting in the drive and the concrete for the road.
Yeah.
So Speedway, same thing. I mean, they were expected to be done at the end of the year. I think they're both going to be, have a schedule, which is going to be nice. So, once they are ready to go, we'll hold a ribbon cutting for both and have everybody out.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Police Department, our police chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Evening, mayor and council. I have one item, a couple items on the agenda this evening. One is, we, at the last work session, spoke about the payment contract with the Will County Child Advocacy Center in the amount of $5,119. It's a wonderful organization, as we spoke of before. This helps them offset a lot of issues with revenue, and that has been cut over the years. I'm asking for approval.
So move, just presented.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Verche, for our donation to the Child Advocacy Center. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, I have, I'm asking to kind of seamlessly replace an officer that is, as told, I spoke to him again this morning. Very soon, he's going to tender his retirement. And I'd like to, just as soon as possible, replace him, just in the works. So I'm asking for approval to do that. On his retirement, the hire is replacement, so we can get that spot filled and get an officer up and running as quickly as we can.
So move, mayor.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Oberlin for the request to replace an anticipated retirement of one of our police officers. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. But also, just to make another announcement, that this Sunday coming up is our Special Olympics car show. It's at Richland Grade School. It's from 1 to 5. We're going to have 50/50 raffle. There'll be food. The band Saints and Sinners are playing. They're really good, and it's always been a great show. It's gotten better and better every year. It's 15 bucks to enter your car, so anybody who has got a nice car wants to enter it in, $15 donation, so it all goes to Special Olympics. That's all I have, mayor.
Any questions of the police chief?
I just want to thank you, Ed, for helping us with meet at the park. It was a success last week. It was bigger than you thought.
That's what I heard.
I want to thank the two officers and deputy resident, they did an amazing job. So I appreciate that.
I'll pass it along.
The committee is really happy with them, with the committee outreach.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Moving on to the mayor's report. You have before you a proclamation recognizing National Rail Safety Week. I will take Alderman Dyke's and Alderman Kubal's heart of the resolution. So I will begin. Whereas 2,214 rail grade crossing collisions resulted in 819 personal injuries and were responsible for 270 fatalities in the United States during 2018, and...
Whereas 1,050 trespassing incidents have occurred in the United States, resulting in 571 pedestrians being killed and another 479 injured while trespassing on railroad property rights of way during 2018, and...
Whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railroad right of ways are private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers.
Associated with highway rail grade crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while new railways and obeying established traffic laws will reduce the numbers of fatalities and injuries, and...
Whereas the International Association of Chiefs of Police, National Operation Lifesaver, United States Department of Transportation, and all local, state, county, and railroad law enforcement officers, first responders, and...
Railroad corporations commit to partnering together in an effort to educate at a national level all aspects of railroad safety to enforce applicable laws in support of National Rail Safety Week.
Now therefore, I, Raymond R. Solomon, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Crest Hill, do hereby proclaim the week of September 22 through the 28 as National Rail Safety Week.
In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the corporate seal of the city of Crest Hill this third day of September 2019, Raymond R. Solomon, mayor. Motion would be in order? So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Gazal. Questions or comments to the proclamation? Roll call, please.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you for that. We will make sure that CN Railroad gets a copy of the proclamation that was passed there this evening. We have two at-grade railroad crossings in the city, one at Oakland Avenue and the other one at K Lord Road. They are quiet zones, so there are no train whistles when they go by, so please be vigilant of both of those and all the railroad crossings when you certainly come up to them. That is all the agenda items for the mayor. The only other thing, again, I would ask that you keep the Bandos and the Thrasher family in your prayers. We certainly, as a city, want to extend our deepest condolences to all of them. It's going to be a very difficult time for them, so please keep them in your prayers as we go forward. With that, I will entertain any questions that anyone may have. Hearing none, we will proceed to the city clerk's report. Vicki Hackney.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have one item on the agenda this evening. There is a block party request from James Hernandez at 16153 Laurel Oak Drive. He's seeking permission to have a block party on Saturday, September 7, from 3 until 7:00 PM. He is requesting to close off Laurel Oak Drive and Laurel Oak Court.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Sclaire, seconded by Alderman Gazal for the block party request. Questions or comments?
Yes, I have an announcement comment. Mr. Hernandez reached out to me today and he'd like to invite the mayor and city council to the block party. So if anyone would like to attend, he'll be very happy to see any of us or all of us.
He hasn't seen how Nate eats.
What's that?
He hasn't seen how Nate eats.
I was just wondering what the food menu was.
Maybe he hasn't seen the mayor how he eats.
The mayor's going to be at Men Who Cook as a cook.
No, he's not.
He did, he did reach out. Mr. Hernandez did reach out to me. Mr. Hernandez did reach out to me. Uh, I'm going to try to get there a little before it starts, so. Roll call, please.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Coli Petro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Um, and another note, as the mayor indicated, um, it's a very sad day for the clerk's office, um, they have, uh, muddled through today and our sympathy goes out to Lori Thrasher, Kevin Brittany, and, um, Lori's parents, family. Um, uh, it's, it's very difficult for a child to lose, so just so she knows that we are all here for, the city is a family, it's here for her and our thoughts go out to her. Thank you. If anyone needs to talk, I'm here and, uh, our staff is always here to help, so, thank you. That's all I have this evening.
Any questions of city clerk? Thank you, Vicki. Moving on to our treasurer's report, Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, mayor and council. I would like to report our regular and overtime payroll from August fifth, two thousand nineteen through August eighteenth of two thousand nineteen in the amount of two hundred and twenty-eight dollars, five hundred and thirty, excuse me, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty cents. Uh, the only item I, uh, seek action on is I look for your approval on our list of bills, which totals for that same period, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand fifty-one dollars and ninety-two cents.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Sclaire, seconded by Alderwoman Oberlin for the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Marco Coli Di Pietro.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's all I have unless there's any questions.
Questions of city treasurer?
Thank you, Glenn. Good night.
Uh, unfinished business. We have nothing on the agenda, anyone? New business. We have plan commission recommendation case RZ dash nineteen dash three dash eight dash one for the property located at eighteen fifty Caton Farm Road, known as The Fields, and is a rezoning from R one to B three. Um, you have the information in your pocket. I will turn it over to our community development director, Scott McMaster, for some opening comments. Scott?
Thank you, uh, mayor. This is for the, uh, as the mayor indicated, for The Fields. This one acre parcel was part of an agreement that the city and, uh, The Fields had back in February of two thousand fifteen, uh, and is now finally followed through, uh, if it's passed this evening. So, this is a one acre park, uh, where the retail area of The Fields is located. Uh, that will include bathrooms that are, uh, at this time, I think, are still yet to be completed, but that, other than that, I think the agreement itself has been fulfilled and they're looking to rezone that one acre parcel this evening.
Okay, I will ask if council has any questions of Scott McMaster?
Well, basically, this is just something that they, we were supposed to do way back then and they had to fulfill.
That's correct.
Requirements and it's over by where they, uh, have the, they've just paved the parking lot and all that over there?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, not hearing any questions. We have Jim Testin here from Hamilton Engineers. Uh, Jim, if there's anything you'd like to add to the conversation? You are representing Brian Newman and The Fields, correct?
Correct. Yes, thank you, mayor. Again, it's Jim Testin with Hamilton Engineers, representing the, the owner, and I'm really here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of Mr. Testin? Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against the case RZ dash nineteen dash three dash eight dash one. The applicant is Brian Newman, representing The Fields, um, for a rezoning of the property located at eighteen fifty Caton Farm Road from R one to a V three. Please come to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. Second request, if anyone would like to speak for or against a request of Brian Newman from The Fields for the rezoning of the property at eighteen fifty Caton Farm Road from R one to V three, please come to the podium, step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. And third and final call, if anyone would like to speak for or against a request of Brian Newman from The Fields, um, for the rezoning of the property at eighteen fifty Caton Farm Road from R one to V three, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. You have before you city council an ordinance establishing a map amendment to the Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to certain real property, the petition of Brian Newman, also known as The Fields. Motion would be in order?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Boucher, seconded by Alderwoman Cola Di Pietro. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Marco Coli Di Pietro.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number is one eight two four.
Okay. Jim, you are all set. Thank you and have a good evening. Anybody else under new business? We have committee liaison reports. Anyone? City? City council comments? These are positive city council comments. Anything you'd like to share with your constituents? Uh, we'll begin with, uh, Ward one this evening, Alderwoman Boucher.
Uh, nothing at this time.
Ward two, Alderwoman Sclaire?
I just wanted to say that we had a, a very nice event over there, um, in Madison, uh, on Zausa. It was a great attendance. A lot of, of the residents came, um, the police were there, um, Public Works was there, um, the fire department was there and the bubble machine was just a nice added touch. And, um, it was so great to be able to get to interact with the residents and then be able to have them interact with the city also. So, um, I'm looking forward to doing it again next year. So, thanks, everyone, for attending.
Alderwoman Gazal?
My condolences to Lori and her family and, uh, just take a moment and think about your life. We have kids, just do that tonight, every day, actually. Thank you, mayor.
Ward three, Alderwoman Oberlin?
Well, I already, I, I did speak with Lori earlier, but, um, as Claudia said, losing a child is the most devastating thing that can ever happen to a person and I, I know it personally, so my heart is broken for her. Um, there's nothing in life that can equip you to deal with that kind of pain, so God bless the whole family.
Alderwoman Cola Di Pietro?
Uh, I'd like to express my condolences from our, my family to Lori's family. Again, thank you to Public Works for coming out on Labor Day and, uh, congratulations to the Siegel family.
Alderwoman Albert, Ward four?
Um, I, I, on behalf of the, uh, Lions Club, I, I just would like to thank everybody that came out to the, uh, Lual picnic last Sunday at St. Joe's Park. And I certainly want to thank, uh, Lori Thrasher, who, who did, uh, run the car show for the Lions Club and, uh, had her son Danny out there helping. He was, he's, he's a, he was a gentleman that was full of life and had a big heart, so, uh, certainly want to give my condolences. Thanks, mayor.
Public comment, if anyone in the audience would like to address city council, please step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. To our city administrator, Heather, is there a need for an executive session?
Yes, sir, as mayor, under two C one for personnel.
Motion would be in order?
So moved.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Cola Di Pietro for an executive session for two C one personnel. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Marco Coli Di Pietro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we'll be going into executive session at seven thirty-five PM.
Are we staying here?
No.